All right. Good morning. This is Diagnostic Imaging of Southbury LLC, docket number 24-32760-CON. Good morning, everybody. Diagnostic Imaging of Southbury LLC, the applicants in this matter seek a certificate of need for the acquisition of imaging equipment pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Section 19A-638, parent A, parent 10. Specifically, Diagnostic Imaging of Southbury LLC seeks to acquire one 1.5 Tesla MRI through this proceeding, or sorry, throughout this proceeding, I'll be interchangeably referring to Diagnostic Imaging of Southbury LLC as Diagnostic Imaging for brevity purposes. Today is April 8th, 2025. My name is Alicia Novy. Dr. Deidre S. Gifford, the Commissioner of the Office of Health Strategy, designated me to serve as a hearing officer for this matter, threw on all motions and recommend findings of fact and conclusions of law upon completion of the hearing. Public Act Number 21-2, as amended by Public Act Number 22-3, authorizes the agency to hold a public hearing by means of electronic equipment. In accordance with this legislation, any person who participates orally in an electronic meeting shall make a good faith effort to state his, her, or their name and title at the outset of each occasion that such person participates orally during an uninterrupted dialogue or series of questions and answers. We ask that all members of the public mute the device they are using to access the hearing and silence any additional devices that are around them. This public hearing is being held pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Section 19A-639A, parent E. As such, this matter constitutes a contested case under the Uniform Administrative Procedures Act and will be conducted in accordance their way. The Office of Health Strategy staff that are here to assist me in gathering facts related to this application may ask the applicant questions. I'm going to ask each staff member assisting today to identify themselves with their name, the spelling of their last name, and OHS title.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Lazarus, L-A-R-U-S, and I'm the Certificate of Need Program Supervisor.
Good morning. My name is Orman Clark, spelled C-L-A-R-K-E. I'm a healthcare analyst.
Thank you very much. Also present is Maida Capozzi, a staff member from our agency who's assisting with hearing logistics and will gather the names for public comment. The Certificate of Need process is a regulatory process, and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the applicant, members of the public, and our staff. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process. Accordingly, decorum must be maintained by all present during these proceedings. This hearing is being transcribed and recorded, and the video will be made available on our OHS website and our YouTube account. All documents related to this hearing that have been or will be submitted to the Office of Health Strategy are available for review on our Certificate of Need CON portal, which is accessible on the Office of Health Strategies webpage. In making my decision, I will consider and make written findings in accordance with Section 19A-639 of the Connecticut General Statutes. Lastly, as Zoom notified you either upon entering this hearing or upon the beginning of recording, I wish to point out that by appearing on camera in this virtual hearing, you are consenting to being filmed. If you wish to revoke your consent, please do so at this time.
No revocation, hearing officer.
All right. Okay, so now we're going to move on to our exhibits. The CON portal contains a pre-hearing table of record in this case. It's time of its filing on Thursday. Exhibits are identified in the table from A to K, with L and M also being in the portal, and those are the agenda and the table of record. Though there are some others I will also get to, the applicant is also... Notice I am taking administrative notice of the following documents: the statewide healthcare facilities and services plan, the facilities and services inventory, OHS acute care hospital discharge database, and all payer claims database data. I may also take administrative notice of the hospital reporting systems, financial and utilization data, and other prior OHS decisions, agreed settlements, and determinations that can be relevant in this matter. Counsel for the applicants, can you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes, Stephen Cowherd, on behalf of the applicant, Diagnostic Imaging of Southbury, I am with the law firm Appulman &amp; Conley.
All right, thank you. Attorney Cowherd, do you have any objections to exhibits A through M?
No objections, hearing officer, but we would like to reserve with respect to exhibit J until after the hearing. We obviously appreciate the conclusion that the service area is over capacity, but with respect to exhibit J, we are not clear on the methodology and would like to have the ability to look at that exhibit further before it's admitted into the record.
All right. That was prepared by our office with our analysts' input, so if you feel after the hearing that you need to do a late file for that, I can allow that.
Yes, please.
All right. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to identify all marked exhibits as full, with the exception that you do have a chance to make a late file should you choose for exhibit J. All right, Attorney Cowherd, are there any additional exhibits you wish to enter at this time?
No, thank you, hearing officer. We are fine to proceed.
Let me just make myself a note. Okay. We will proceed in the order established in the agenda for today's hearing. I would like to advise the applicants that we may ask questions related to your application that you feel you have already addressed. We will do this for the purpose of ensuring the public has knowledge of your proposal and for the purpose of clarification. I want to reassure you that we have reviewed your application, your completeness response, and the prefile testimony, and I will do so many times before issuing a decision. As this hearing is being held virtually, we ask that all participants, to the extent possible, should enable the use of video cameras when testifying or commenting during the proceedings. All participants shall mute their devices and should disable their cameras when we go off record or take a break. Please be advised that although we try and shut off the hearing recording during breaks, it may continue. If the recording is on, any audio or video not disabled will be accessible to all participants in this hearing. Public comment taken during the hearing will likely go in the order established by OHS during the registration process. However, I may allow public officials to testify out of order. I or OHS staff will call each individual by name when it is his or her turn to speak. Registration for public comment is currently open. Please sign up in the chat by stating your full name and phone number in the chat. Our support staff will keep a list of all registrations. The applicant's witnesses must be available after public comment, as OHS may have follow-up questions based on the public comment. Are there any other housekeeping matters or procedural issues that we need to address before we start, Attorney Cowherd?
None, hearing officer Novy. We are ready to move forward.
All right. Okay, with that, Attorney Cowherd, do you have an opening statement?
I do not. I'll wait for a closing argument, and Mr. Bullier is ready to be our first witness.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is actually, I'm going to ask you to identify all of your witnesses, and then I'll swear them in, and then we'll begin with their questioning or with their statements. Can you please identify all of the individuals and actually just point to them, just say out loud where they are in your room so that we can have a... For our sonographer, she can note their location, who are going to testify on behalf of the application. They should... Well, they're all in the room, so once you are identified, I will swear you in.
This is Christopher Bullier. He is representing the administration of Diagnostic Imaging Southbury. Immediately across the table from me is Dr. Manten, and diagonally across the table is Dr. Lee. I'll let each of the witnesses introduce themselves more fully.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to ask you each to please raise your right hand as I swear you in. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you provided in your prefile and the evidence that you will give or have given in this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, or upon penalty of perjury? Mr. Bullier?
I do.
All right, Mr. Manten?
Yes, I do.
Manten, sorry, I apologize. Or Dr. Manten, and then Dr. Lee?
Yes.
All right, thank you. You can all put your hands down now. I'd like to remind you that when giving your testimony, please make sure to state your full name and adopt any written testimony that you have submitted on the record prior to testifying. All right, the applicant may now proceed with their testimony, and I'll ask the witnesses that you define any acronyms for the benefit of the public and the clarity of the record. All right.
Good morning, Hearing Officer Novy and members of the Office of Healthcare Strategy Hearing Panel. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Christopher Bullier, and I adopt my prefile testimony. I am the Facility Manager of Diagnostic Imaging of Southbury LLC. DIS is the acronym. I've been fortunate to hold this position since its inception in 1999 for going on 26 years. DIS is a joint venture, freestanding imaging center involving St. Mary's Hospital, Southbury Holding LLC, and RadCorp of Southbury LLC. I will address the OHS public hearing issues in my comments in regards to issue one or item one, to discuss current and projected wait times and the impact of the proposed scanner on these times. Third next available appointments, or TNAA, is accepted, industry standard measure for access to imaging services. In December 2024, contrast MRI TNAA, or third next available appointment, was 12 business days in our center, or up to 16 calendar days. And of recent, March 20th, contrast MRI TNAA has increased to 14 business days or 18 calendar days, which marks a 16.7 increase in business day delays and a 12.5 increase in calendar day delays in just three months. The acceleration of TNAA since December of 2024 is particularly concerning because the first quarter of the year is typically not as busy as the fourth quarter of the calendar year for various factors. We applied then a three-year annual average increase to the current TNAA, which is very conservative in the light of our current experience, and project without the second MRI, those delays in TNAA will increase by two business days per year. Another factor is missed MRI appointments are increasing along with our scheduling demands. During that same three-year period, DIS experienced 33% increase in missed MRI appointments, which are clinically significant because literature we've submitted demonstrates that patients who miss their appointments typically don't follow up with them and get them rescheduled. The addition of the second MRI should eliminate our scheduling delays at DIS and provide enough flexibility in daily workflow to allow DIS to accommodate urgent add-on MRIs without having to bump or delay existing scheduled patients. We expect to fully normalize the existing MRI volume with the second machine by shifting it, allowing us to address patient issue, patient body habitus, and urgency between the two magnets. Item number two, affirmative steps taken to maximize MRI capacity at the Southbury location, and whether the 120% utilization rate we're reporting is consistent throughout the day or limited to just peak hours. Quite simply, we've done everything possible to improve the MRI access. Amongst them, we've invested in a multitude of available imaging technology processes to standardize and speed up patient throughput while increasing and maximizing their care and detection. Some of those software and artificial intelligence programs include RadAI Continuity, which impacts patient continuum of care and follow-up, RadAI Omni, which decreases the stress of the radiologist by enhancing their ability to dictate in a more expedient fashion. River Rain Clear Visual Intelligence is a specialized lung detection model that, again, works towards increasing the benefit of getting those patients' accurate diagnoses year over year in the lungs, while also aiding the radiologist. Because as these exam numbers increase, the radiologist's time needs to be optimized, and their efficiency and their fatigue needs to be lowered. ICAD Profound Breast Health Suite, that's another AI product that allows the radiologist to zero in on normal tissue, questionable tissue, and highly concerning tissue. So this aid also gives them an efficiency that's well gained. The most important one specifically that I want to highlight is SWIFT MR. That has allowed us to address our capacity issues by trying to increase our resolution and image quality while... and detection of disease while also comforting the patient. And the key component in MRI is, you know, theoretically, the longer the scan is, the more clear, the more information you can gather. The bad news is, the longer the scan, the more difficult it is for the patient to remain still, which is critical for an inaccurate MRI acquisition. So the goal is to maintain that quality while increasing the throughput and getting that patient done in an expedient time that's comfortable for them. Southbury has a 40% Medicare population, and those elderly patients, it's hard for them to lay on a stiff table without a lot of cushion nor a lot of room in the MRI configuration. So shorter scan at a better optimized image quality is what we've obtained with this, and we've realized those gains and those efficiency gains since autumn of 2023. And yet, our volume still continues to grow to even well above 120% utilization today. And there are no lulls to our schedule. The third item is projected impact of the additional MRI scanning on imaging services in the primary service area. Bottom line is, this proposal's sole purpose is to improve access to MRI for DIS's existing patients and physician referrals. We have not relied on any projections outside of our existing referral base, nor touching upon any of the existing providers in the area. We have spent 26 years, as I said, building relationships within the area with our residents, our local providers, to better understand and respond to their needs. And this application is one of those steps that we've taken. Trends do show that MRI utilization is increasing and will continue to do so in the market, not only just in our location. For example, the OHS hospital reporting system, Report 450, indicates that MRI volume grew 10.2% to 16.9% among hospital and hospital-related entities in our service area in 2023. Given site of service rules requiring medical necessity for hospital-based and hospital outpatient department MRI, Report 450 hospital-affiliated MRIs increases are suggestive of an area-wide increase in utilization in 2023. There are a total of eight MRIs in our primary MRI scanners in our primary service area. And in reporting historical data, 85%, five of those were under an 85% utilization in 2022. However, it should be noted that three of the MRIs in our service area are covered by Trinity Health affiliated radiologists, of which are sitting at this table. And the three magnets that are associated with this practice each exceeds the 85% threshold: St. Mary's Hospital, DIS, and Naugatuck Valley MRI. In conclusion, our CON application demonstrates clear public need for second MRI and DIS, and at DIS, and does not represent any unnecessary duplication of services. We have demonstrated compliance with the relevant statutory review criteria. And I just thank you for the opportunity to provide this testimony today, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I would now like to turn over testimony to Dr. Jeffrey Manten, who is the Chair of the DIS Board and Co-Medical Director, Dr. Lee of our center.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Hearing Officer Novy and members of the Office of Health Strategy Hearing Panel. My name is Jeffrey Manten. I'm the Chair of the Board. I'm a diagnostic imaging of Southbury and the Co-Medical Director, also at the center. I adopt my prefile testimony. For background, I'm a fellowship-trained body, musculoskeletal, and neuroradiology MRI radiologist. It was a combined fellowship focusing on MR. I currently perform or read, interpret CT, MRI, and exams, and perform some interventional radiology procedures. I'm the President of Naugatuck Valley Radiology Associates, which I'll refer to as NVRA, and I'm also the Chair of the Department of Radiology at St. Mary's Hospital.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. This is the sonographer. If I could just have you read a little bit slower. You're getting a little bit speedy for me to keep up.
Sorry.
No problem. Thank you.
I have a cold, and I tend to talk fast. Those two combined together tend not to be easy to follow. So is there anything I need to repeat?
Nope, you're good. Everybody does it. It's no problem at all. You're good to continue.
All right. So I'm here today to discuss DIS's commitment to quality as well as the capabilities of the new MRI unit. First of all, our commitment to clinical quality, DIS actively participates in all available accreditations from the American College of Radiology, including the fact that we are a designated lung cancer screening center. Our MRI is an accredited facility. We are a breast imaging center of excellence. Our CT or computer tomography machine is an accredited facility, as is our ultrasound facility, and those combined have enabled us to maintain or achieve the ACR's recognition as Diagnostic Imaging Center of Excellence, or DICOE. We first achieved the DICOE certification shortly after it was introduced in 2014, and we were one of the first in the country and were the one of only two in the state, but we were the first in the state to achieve that status. We've recertified three additional times, most recently in 2023. Being part of all these accreditations validate that DIS have staff that are properly trained, licensed, and are receiving ongoing professional development. And the accreditations also validate that DIS delivers safe, efficacious services utilizing evidence-based protocols and used consistent operational practices. We also participate in numerous ACR, that's the American College of Radiology, National Radiology Data Registries, including the Qualified Clinical Data Registry, which is a Center for Medicare Services approved Qualified Clinical Data Registry for Merit-Based Incentive Payment Systems, or MIPS, which ties payment quality payments to quality and cost-efficient care metrics. Providers achieving certain benchmark quality benchmarks are eligible for incentive payments, and we regularly meet those eligibility requirements for additional payments. As part of the Lung Cancer Screening Registry, we use benchmarks in the screening program, comparing our performance with other peers and registry benchmarks, and we identify areas for quality improvement. We're one of the first imaging centers in the country to participate in this registry. We also participate in the Dose Index Registry, which is a benchmark for radiation dosage to ensure that patients receive safe, targeted quality imaging while minimizing exposure to radiation. As part of the National Mamography Database, we are able to compare our facility performance against regional, national benchmarks, including rates of cancer detection, positive predictive value, and recall. Our General Radiology Improvement Database collects and marks benchmarks for imaging facility process of care data, including report turnaround times, patient wait times, incidence rates, and other processes and outcome measures. DIS is also a member of the Strategic Radiology Patient Safety Organization, which is the first radiology-specific PSO, that's Patient Safety Organization, in the United States that's been recognized by the federal government. It includes some 450 imaging centers in 30 states, which participate to identify best practices, improve patient safety, and increase patient satisfaction. DIS and NVRA are the only participants in this PSO in the state of Connecticut. Regarding physician engagement, we believe that our referring physicians should be able to easily access our schedules, our images, or reports, and our radiologists in a timely manner for the best possible patient outcomes. Each referring provider has access 24/7 to our provider portal for direct order entry, for uploading patient demographic and clinical information, for receiving assistance for prior authorization, getting real-time order status updates, downloading imaging study results, viewing images, and viewing images as they are required with real-time access to the supervising radiologist, access to the patient's historical patient record, as well as a mobile app for on-the-go access. We have a quarterly newsletter and have regular check-ins by our team members to ensure there's service satisfaction. And as a result of our physician engagements, our referral base is mostly outside of the Trinity Health of New England network. We also firmly believe that our patient experience is important to our success, and DIS aims to be the imaging center of choice through exceptional patient experiences. Patients also have 24/7 access to a dedicated portal, providing access for self-scheduling of appointments, to complete the registration forms, to view their images and reports, to email radiologists securely and electronically confirm appointments, as well as opt-in for appointment reminders and alerts. Monthly third-party patient satisfaction surveys are administered and demonstrate high levels of satisfaction for our patients for our imaging center. And as Mr. Bullier mentioned, the SWIFT MRI that we've employed for over the past year has shortened our MRI scan times while improving patient comfort and reducing artifact from images from involuntary motion, as well as improving patient imaging quality. So with all of the success that we've had, we've reached the point where the only way for us to maintain our level of service that's being demanded upon the imaging center is to apply for a new machine, which gives us the opportunity to access the latest technologies in MRI equipment. So we would be looking for a wide bore scanner, which would be more comfortable for patients of size and also a shorter bore, so patients that are claustrophobic would have more comfort and less distraction while being scanned. The table weight limits have increased in latest scanners, and we'd be looking for one that could accommodate patients up to 550 pounds. These additional scanners also have integrated deep learning within their machines, so taking all of the benefits of the SWIFT MRI from computer-aided image generation and making shorter scan times directly integrated without using a third-party application. There are also increases, increasing advances in techniques like fresh blood imaging, which would enable us to perform arteriography with or without the need of contrast-based agents. This could be used for both chest imaging, pulmonary angiography, and thoracic abdominal aortic aneurysm imaging, as well as whole-body angiography. The newer machines also employ improved metal reduction artifact techniques, which is important for patients with arthroplasty patients, and it's a service line that we see an increased amount of need with our patient population and the proliferation of orthopedic hardware. The newer machines also take advantage of additional techniques to decrease the amount of noise during the scanner. MRI machines are notorious for being acoustically uncomfortable, and the newer machines are much quieter, which, as patients are more comfortable, they tend not to move, which improves not only patient experience, but also the image quality. Inclusion, DIS has a long history of providing exceptional, high-quality imaging services to all persons regardless of their ability to pay. Improvement to quality patient service and refer service along with technological improvements and a growing MRI applications have resulted in DIS experiencing extreme volume pressures that are unsustainable and causes delay in patient diagnosis and treatment. This proposal will allow DIS to eliminate MRI backlogs, accommodate urgent add-on cases, and offer the latest cutting-edge technology to our existing community of referring providers. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony today, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And now I would like to turn over my testimony to my co-medical director, Howard Lee.
Good morning, Hearing Officer Novy and members of the Office of Health Strategy Hearing Panel. My name is Howard Lee, and I am the President of Northeast Radiology PC, as well as the Co-Medical Director of Diagnostic Imaging of Southbury. I adopt my prefile testimony. As a bit of background, I am a fellowship-trained radiologist with background in body imaging, including CT and MRI, specialized in body imaging, including oncology, as well as musculoskeletal and breast imaging. I have a number of hospital affiliations, including St. Mary's Hospital, Danbury Hospital, and Northern Westchester Hospital. I am here specifically to discuss how our present at least 120% MRI utilization impacts our impacts our workflow, our workforce, and the patients in our facilities. So in no particular order, some of the factors that we've seen that have led to and continue, we predict to lead to further volume growth include breast MRI, where there has been increasing adoption of breast MRI for patients who are at high risk of developing breast cancer, based on a number of recommendations from national boards. The, it is, we still understand that despite the increased utilization, that the majority of patients who would be appropriately screened with breast MRI are not presently yet getting that screening. We're also seeing breast MRI used for surveillance of patients who have already been treated for breast cancer, as well as surveillance of patients undergoing chemotherapy for breast cancer prior to surgery. In addition to that, we've seen tremendous growth in prostate MRI. Previously, prostate MRI was primarily the realm of three Tesla scanners, but now under the Pyrad system for prostate MRI, high-quality, stay there, 1.5 Tesla MRIs are also approved for that indication. We're seeing prostate MRI increasingly used for detection of prostate cancer. But in addition to that, we're also seeing increased utilization due to watchful waiting. The, a large number of patients with prostate cancer have low-grade tumors that may be amenable to monitoring rather than invasive treatments such as surgery or radiation therapy. That leads to annual follow-up prostate MRIs for a large and growing number of patients. In Southbury, as was stated, a large portion of our patients are elderly and Medicare patients, and we see further and future growth in that demographic that is leading to increased growth of our referrals. Of note, many of these patients require additional time to complete their examinations. There may be physical disabilities that we have to, we have to take care of in getting the patients in and out of the scanners. Oftentimes, for comfort purposes, we find that it's not uncommon that the examination has to be interrupted and delayed further for positioning changes or even bathroom breaks. So those are some of the issues that we're seeing. We're also identifying an increased transition of body imaging. When I specialize in chest, abdomen, and pelvis imaging in MRI, many of these patients who used to undergo CT scan imaging are transitioning to MRI follow-ups. We see this especially in our oncology practice, where we have an ever-growing number of younger patients diagnosed with cancer who are needing to undergo follow-up imaging, sometimes as frequently as every six months, previously with CT scans. However, extrapolated over a lifetime of follow-ups, that leads to an unacceptable radiation dose. As the MRI technology has improved, has become faster, we've seen a large transition from CT scan follow-ups to MRI follow-ups, leading to another increase in our volumes. All of these factors have led to us being at least 120% utilization for our MRI with further growth. There's really nowhere else to go, to grow with our present scanner. What we do find every day as we are treating our patients is that because of our overutilization of the MRI, anything that upsets the schedule, a patient who's uncomfortable and needs to be repositioned, a patient who needs to take a bathroom break, an add-on urgent examination, which is the rule rather than the exception, most days that occurs, can throw our schedule into disarray. It can inconvenience our patients. It can sometimes lead to further delays in our patients getting their diagnostic scans. The, the other thing that we're seeing is that increasing volume of pediatric scanning is possible with the faster scanners. And it's a great technology in that these patients, pediatric patients, previously oftentimes had to be scanned in a hospital setting with anesthesia, engendering additional risk and expense to those procedures. We are now, because of the fast scanners, especially with the scanner that we're looking to purchase, able to do scans at a rate that allows those young patients to get their MRIs without anesthesia, with the comfort of their parents sitting alongside of them in the scanning room. So in conclusion, we have encountered overutilization of our MRI. We predict that overutilization or that utilization to continue to grow that has led to negative impacts on the patient experience in our offices. And it is our hope that by adding the additional MRI scanner, that we will be able to ameliorate these conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and we can start with my questions, or if you'd like, we can take a break before I start my questions. Steve, are you okay?
Would anybody like to take a break? Okay, the witnesses are prepared to answer questions.
Okay, so I'm going to address these globally. Attorney Cowherd, you can decide who would be most apt to address these questions. My first is going to go to the SWIFT MRI technology that you were talking about. How does, you said it shortens times for scans. Can you elaborate on how it does shorten those, those times? What the, if the shortening is a minute, you know, what, how much it shortens it and what the savings is? And say your name when you answer a question, so that our court reporter knows who's answering.
Hi, this is Christopher Bowler, answering the question regarding SWIFT MRI. Yeah, the application is an AI software algorithm that works on shortening the scan time. And basically, it just allows us to, the FDA-approved science or software allows the scan time to be shortened. And it introduces a, when you have a shortened scan, you introduce noise into the exam. And noise is not a good thing in an MRI. However, the algorithm is strong and robust enough to decrease that noise, therefore shortening the scan time.
Do you have any idea what?
Percentage?
Yes.
Sorry. Yeah, it varies. It can be upwards of 50% reduction in time. We've seen it, but depending on the body part, and it's not across the board, it's depending on body part and imaging parameters based on the disease process we're looking into.
And you said it could be upwards of, but average, would you say it's more than 20% or?
Don't feel you have to speculate.
Yeah.
Witness, if you.
It's fairly robust, so I would tend to lean towards the closer end of 50%, but yeah.
Dr. Manton, do you want to speak to any?
Yeah.
Actual clinical issues?
Sure. I mean, it's, the science behind it is largely in how the images are acquired with an MRI machine. So an MRI is a giant magnet, and it's sending a pulse sequence and then listening to the radio frequency waves that come back. And it acquires something called K-space, which is a term for this plotted diagram of all of that, that radio frequency signal. And there's a certain number of pulse sequences that go out. So the algorithm that you're using with deep learning technology can predict what those future, what that data is going to come back to be without sending as many pulse sequences. So it doesn't have to, each individual scan doesn't take as long. And we've seen, basically, if we look at schedule blocks before we'd have an exam, we'd have to schedule in an hour. We could do now maybe in 30 to 45 minutes, depending on what it is. And it's, they even have technology, they'd like to be able to scan a brain in five minutes, which currently a non-contrast brain, you know, I think we're scheduling for 15 or 20 minutes now before we're scheduling for 30 or 40. So it's significant, and it's, that's, it's had a massive impact on our operation. And for us, it's, it's validating that we're still able to fill the scan times because the patients want to come. And it becomes this cycle, a positive cycle, that patients have a good experience, and the scans are shorter, and they tell their friends that's place to go because it's not as uncomfortable as it used to be. If they're claustrophobic, they can handle 15 minutes, but they can't handle a half an hour, they can get through the scan. So, but we're not sacrificing image quality. In fact, we're improving in the process, which is a very, that's a unicorn. It's very rare to see a piece of technology that does both.
I have a second question here. Okay, I'm going to shift gears and go to some questions about breast imaging. So in your, in your application, you did notice that you stated that you are, one of the reasons you're asking for the second MRI is because of breast imaging. How many requests for breast imaging is DIS currently able to accommodate?
Well, hi, this is Howard Lee. Although, at this point, we are presently able to accommodate all of our requests for breast MRI. Of course, as Chris Bowler said, that oftentimes that may be as much as a two-week wait for that. You know, clearly, if it's purely for a screening test, generally that's not a problem. But a number of our breast MRI patients are also newly diagnosed with breast cancer, and the two weeks is really unacceptable for them. So we, of course, try to do what we can to squeeze them into the schedule in any way possible, but it's yet another stressor that leads to our schedule becoming unmanageable or unwieldy.
Could you talk about how this will change with the second machine?
In a couple ways. So first of all, with the additional capacity with the second machine, we'll be able to get rid of, hopefully, a good portion of our backlog. The other huge impact that it will have is it will free up time for us to do MRI-guided breast biopsy. In general, if you're performing a diagnostic examination, you recommend a biopsy, it's good to be able to offer those patients that procedure in the same facility. The problem is MRI breast biopsy, those procedures take a significant amount of time. In general, the machine would need to be reserved for in the range of an hour and a half or so, which right now is just not physically possible with our present unit. So both in diagnosis and in biopsy, the new machine will have a huge positive impact.
And currently, if, I'm sorry, I just have a follow-up question to that. Currently, if somebody would, needs an MRI-guided biopsy, are you doing those at your center or are those being referred out?
So this is Jeff Manton again. I'll take that. We are performing them at one of the other NVRA reading sites. So it's another joint venture with St. Mary's Hospital. So because all of the sites that NVRA reads from are managed by the same entity, we're able to facilitate scheduling at the most appropriate location and whatever's most convenient for the patient. So all of our, of those four magnets that Mr. Bowley mentioned in his testimony, all of the biopsy, MRI-guided breast biopsies are performed at that one particular center.
Can you tell me where that is, just so I can kind of get an idea of where they would have to travel to?
1389 West Main Street in Waterbury, Connecticut.
Okay, so it's, it's actually in a different town?
It is in one town, yes.
Okay. So do you have a limit of how many, how many breast imaging requests you can accommodate at this time?
No, we don't have any limit, and we would never turn away a patient who needed breast imaging. Again, it's just a matter of how long they have to wait at this point. But we, yes, we do, we do not have any limits for any of our patients. We do whatever is possible to accommodate our referring doctors and our patients.
Okay. Going out to, going back to the MRI biopsy. So can you walk me through what would happen? A patient comes in, they get the MRI, they need to have a biopsy. And what would the care for that patient look like in a timeline after that currently?
Currently, yes. So we'll take a situation where a patient comes into Diagnostic Imaging Southbury, receives a screening MRI on day one, and finding is identified that's recommended for biopsy. Often in these cases, we recommend a second look ultrasound first because ultrasound is less expensive and a little more user-friendly to perform the biopsy. So generally, they'll go back to often either a radiologist or a breast surgeon to look an ultrasound, see if they can find the lesion in question. If they do, typically, that will be biopsied. And if there's any uncertainty or just confirmations requested, that patient may come back for, we kind of called it a confirmed scan where a clip is put in under ultrasound that we scan under MRI to, to see if it is the same lesion. So the timeframe for that depends on how long it'll take to see either, whether it's a surgeon or a radiologist, and that's going to vary depending on the two. I can speak to, you know, how long it would take if we came, if the patient came back to us, which would generally be the same week or within, you know, within seven days. Depending if it's, you know, when the MRI is on, beginning of the week or not, breast surgeons, I can't speak to, I don't know their, their schedule. But from when it's ordered, from there to come back to the bag, that we're getting that in within a week. We block out certain times every week for breast biopsies at that center because we have a limited number of radiologists who are performing those procedures, and we know how backlogged our scanners are. We want to make sure that we can accommodate those patients. So they're generally very early in the morning, 6:00, 6:30 in the morning. And so generally, if it's not that week, it's the next week that they're being done, is from when they're ordered. So that really, the biggest variable is when the patient goes to see their referring physician, and then when the order is placed. But once it's placed, we get it in within a week, I'd say 90% of the time.
What would that look like going forward with the second machine?
The same, if not better. It's so procedures like this that are of a time-sensitive nature, we do everything we possibly can to get them in. I'm one of the radiologists that performs the MRI-guided biopsies. I've come in on my vacations, come in on days off, come in at 6:00 in the morning to do these procedures because I know how important it is for the patient. So we'd want to continue that level of access. So the only other limiting factor is generally the patient's availability, and if there are any pre-authorizations that are necessary, which we've done them the same day, but it's difficult to do because sometimes, because it's advanced technology, there's often a pre-authorization, an insurance issue that needs to be achieved before we can actually schedule it.
Thank you. All right. Going to head back to a different category. I did have one follow-up question, actually, one to ask. I wanted to ask a little bit about unlimiting the backup and that you, that you currently, or the backup that you have for scans. And you said that, that you, you could shift some of this to the new machine. Can you speak a little more about how the second MRI will help with the backlog in scanner requests that you currently have?
Sure. This is Christopher Bowler. So the threshold of 4,000 scans, the requirement for utilization, 85% of that is around 3,400. We're well, we're well above that in our previous submissions. I could speak to the totality of 202024, which wasn't reflected, I don't think, in fully. We realized that we are in excess of 5,300 scans in 2024. So again, that second MRI, the first, the current one is exceedingly overcapacity. That second MRI will afford us those opportunities to shift the overage, which would bolster the day-to-day operations of that magnet and demonstrated on the financial worksheet to make it feasible. And then And then open up the the additional opportunity for these advanced procedures that we aren't currently doing.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I do take notes on paper, so if you see me looking down, I'm usually writing. Helps keep me paying attention. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to suggest about a 15-minute break now so that I can meet with my analysts and that we can give Attorney Cowherd a chance to meet with you and see if he has any follow-up he would like to ask to the questions that I just asked. After that, we will go to the public, you know, after we come back and see if there's additional questions, we will go to the public portion. I like to do closing arguments after the public comments are done, so that way we give your attorney some time to respond to them. So at this point, we will take a let's go with a 15-minute, well, just come back at 10:05, okay? All right, I'll see everybody at 10:05. We'll take a short, a little more than 15-minute break. Thank you, everyone. We will go back as the Zoom voice has just notified you. We are recording this hearing and by remaining on, by being in this hearing, you consent to being recorded. If you would like to revoke that consent, please exit the hearing at this time. And we will go ahead and get started. Good, good morning, everybody. Welcome back. This is the hearing for a CON application filed by Diagnostic Imaging of Southbury LLC, docket number 24-32760-CON. I just met during the break with my analysts and we do not have additional questions for you at this time. Attorney Cowherd, do you have any questions you would like to ask your witnesses at this time?
Yes, one on redirect of Dr. Manton. Dr. Manton, you mentioned referring image-guided MRI-guided biopsies to the Nogatuck Valley MRI, which NVRA is also part of. Speak to the capacity issues at that site?
Yes, it's it's very similar to Diagnostic Imaging of Southbury as far as volumes and where it lands in the scale of capacity. It's over full. We're using SWIFT technology there as well and it's it's a full patient schedule every day. So it's a, by, yes.
It's utilization exceeds its capacity.
Correct.
Thank you.
I just have a follow-up. That was one of the three that you mentioned that of the eight area MRI that was that was operating overcapacity. Is that correct?
It's in the service area, yes.
Yes, okay. All right. Okay, so now we will go to the public portion. For those of you just joining us, this is the second portion of today's hearing concerning a CO and application filed by Diagnostic Imaging of Southbury. At this time, I will ask again to our to our assistant, Ms. Capozzi, do we have anybody who would like to, would like to make a public comment?
No, not at this time.
Okay, I'm going to ask I'm going to ask that everybody in this hearing, if you'd like to make a comment, you can unmute yourself and let me know that you would like to. All right, so thank you for, again, I would like to remind you that anybody who is listening, if you would like to submit further written comments, OHS by email or mail, however, it does have to reach us within seven business days or seven calendar days, so I highly suggest email. You have seven days from today to email us your comments at coandcomment@ct.gov or you may use our is our mailing address, 450 Capitol Ave, MS number 5100H or 51OHS, P.O. Box 340308, Hartford, Connecticut, 06134. All right. All right, thank you for taking the time to be here today. We are ready to continue on with we'll go with the late files. Attorney Cowherd, do you want to file a late file for Exhibit J?
With respect to Exhibit J, yes, we would like to have a dialogue with the agency about the methodology beforehand, Hearing Officer, so we'd like to reserve the right to make a late file. But it's really a question of going through the mathematics and we didn't feel it appropriate in this forum to have that discussion with you and your staff. So we'd like to reserve.
Okay, how about I order a late file? If your answer is that you don't need one, you can file just a brief written response saying that you don't need one?
That'd be fine.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll do a late file on Exhibit J. How much time do you think you'll need to review that?
I wouldn't expect more than a week.
All right, well, a week puts us right before Easter. So do you want to come back with that after Easter?
Good point. Let's go two weeks, Hearing Officer.
Okay, we'll go to April 22nd. How about, I hate to put us, you know, get really close to a holiday because it tends to mess people up. All right, so let's go to late file for April 22nd by the end of the day by 4:00 PM. Is that open?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to issue an order that that be filed by April 22nd at 4:00 PM. Again, if you don't have an objection, you can just file that in writing as well. All right, so we will move on to closing arguments. Attorney Cowherd, would you like to make a closing statement?
Yes, I would, Hearing Officer Novi. On behalf of the applicant, first of all, we'd like to thank the agency for its time and attention to this application. And I'd like to start with simply the numbers. The application shows a 120% utilization rate within the service area well beyond the 85% threshold in the services and facilities plan. In addition, the Exhibit J that we were just referring to shows an even higher utilization rate within the service area of 130%. So the numbers could stop there and and we think more than approve this application. But what we also think is it's important what you heard today. The first thing you heard is the wait time for individuals awaiting a first diagnosis possibly of breast cancer, prostate cancer. And you heard for the contrast studies that it's now out to 18 days, calendar days of a individual waiting to be diagnosed. That that in itself speaks to need. You also heard that the utilization within this facility is constant throughout the day. So there's always the need for this second MRI. It's not sporadic, it's consistent. With respect to the issues of what's happening in the marketplace, well, certainly the doctor spoke to the clinical issues. But you have equally the hospitals in this service area operating overcapacity. So there's clearly a larger trend here than this specific applicant. With respect to the issues that Dr. Jeffrey Manton spoke to, we have one of the first, if not the first, as he spoke to Center of Excellence for Diagnostic Imaging here. You have a longstanding provider that's provided this services to the service area for 26 years. And what we're talking about here is the ability through the 1.5 Tesla technology to provide scans in a shorter period of time, which equates directly to safety and comfort for the patient and with more quality, especially with the AI-guided technology. And the last point I'd like to make is really goes to Dr. Lee's testimony and the human element, but also the clinical element. What we have happening clinically in MRI is that these breast cancer patients or these prostate cancer patients, or even if they're in that wait phase, they are being monitored through MRI, which is much safer than radiation treatments, CTs, et cetera. So we think all of this has been about shorter scan times, better imaging quality. And when you put that on top of the utilization rate being well above the threshold, we see no question why this particular application would not be granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney Cowherd. I would like to thank everybody who is in this hearing for attending today. At this point, I will adjourn this hearing. This hearing is adjourned, but the record will remain open until closed by OHS. Thank you, everybody, and have a good, or sorry, have a good morning, Stowe.